It's a bit after seven, so I don't want to get started if you could.
Yeah.
And before we go on the record, just a couple of housekeeping-type things that I'd like to let you all know about. The first, and many of you have done this already, first is that when we get to the part of tonight where we will be taking some questions from the audience, we would ask that you sign up on the speaker sign-up sheet. There is a copy of the speaker sign-up sheet on that table that you saw just before coming into the auditorium. And I'd like to note that also on that table, there are a number of handouts. One is called the Siding Board Handbook, which tells you a little bit about our agency and what we do. There also are, there's a set of our regulations, which would be helpful to anyone who is thinking about intervening or becoming a part of the proceeding. And there are also our copies of the notice for tonight's hearing, and that notice is in both Spanish and English, as is the handbook.
Can you speak up a little more?
All right, let me try. Thank you for letting me know that, can you hear me any better?
Yeah.
Testing, better, right? Okay.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. The other main thing that I'd like to let everyone know, and this was in the public hearing notice as well, is that we do have two interpreters here this evening, and if anyone would like to make comments in Spanish or listen to the hearing in Spanish, the interpreters have the equipment that will allow you to do that. I don't know where they are at the moment. Oh, there they are. If you could just raise your hand again so people can see where you are. You're free to go over to them at any time in tonight's hearing, and then they'll take you back to, again, that table right outside the door, which has the headsets that you would use if you wanted to hear the hearing translated into Spanish. We're going to go on the record shortly, and what I would like to start with is to have one of the interpreters make the announcement that I just made in Spanish about the availability of interpretation.
Buenas noches. Nosotras estamos aquí para ayudarles con la interpretación en español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor podrían levantar la mano para que pasemos a la parte de atrás a recogerlo para que puedan escuchar todo en español.
Okay, let's go on the record, please. Good evening. This is a public comment hearing in the matter of Northeast Energy Center LLC, docketed as Northeast Energy Center LLC, EFSB 18-04/DPU 18-96. My name is Catherine Seedor. I am an attorney with the Massachusetts Energy Facility Siding Board and a presiding officer in this case. With me here tonight are the other members of the Siding Board staff who will be involved in this case. To my far left is John Young, who is the technical director for the Siding Division. To Mr. Young's right is Andrew Green. Mr. Green is the director of the Siding Division. To my right is Dean Hazel. Mr. Hazel is a regional planner with the Siding Division. And to his right is Wayne Wang, also a regional planner for the Siding Board. Also with us here this evening, out at the table that I've been referring to, is Joan Evans, and Ms. Evans is the general counsel for the Siding Board. Northeast Energy Center, or NEC, is proposing to construct a new facility in the town of Charlton that would be able to liquefy natural gas, or LNG, store the LNG on-site, and then load the liquefied gas onto trucks for delivery to NEC gas customers such as National Grid. NEC has filed two petitions with the Siding Board in connection with its proposed facility. One petition seeks approval from the Siding Board to construct the facility on one of three proposed sites. The other petition seeks certain individual zoning exemptions and a comprehensive exemption from the Town of Charlton zoning bylaw, again, to allow construction and operation of the proposed facility. Tonight, after my introductory remarks, NEC will make a presentation regarding its proposed facility. After NEC's presentation, those who have signed up on the speaker sign-up sheet will have the opportunity to ask NEC questions about or make comments on the proposed facility. Public comments are not evidence in the legal sense, but comments from members of the local community are an important source of background information for the Siding Board in reviewing a proposed energy facility and its potential impacts. There is a court reporter here who will transcribe the entire public hearing. As I mentioned before we went on the record, in addition to the handouts that have been translated into Spanish, there are Spanish interpreters here tonight for those who may wish to offer comment or ask questions of NEC in Spanish. And I would just like to let you know that if there is anyone who would like translation assistance from the interpreters, you can feel free to get up and go to them at any time during tonight's proceeding. Before turning to the company's presentation, I would like to provide a very brief history of this proceeding, then I will outline the legal standards that will govern the Siding Board's review of the proposed NEC facility, the process by which the board will review the facility, and how persons interested in further formal participation in this proceeding after tonight's hearing, how those persons could get more involved. As many of you are aware, tonight's public comment hearing is the second public comment hearing conducted by the Siding Board regarding NEC's proposal to construct the LNG facility. The Siding Board conducted its first public hearing on November 13, 2018, at Charlton Town Hall. After that public hearing in December of 2018, NEC informed the Siding Board that it would be revising its proposal for that facility. The Siding Board determined that the differences between the proposal presented by NEC in its original petitions and the company's planned revisions to that proposal were significant enough to warrant the filing of a new petition and holding a second public comment hearing. As the Siding Board has indicated in previous communications, this second public comment hearing also includes a second opportunity for the filing of petitions to intervene and petitions to participate in the proceeding, and I will address that a little more specifically in just a couple of moments. That's primarily aimed at informing those who have already filed petitions to intervene in the proceeding that they don't need to redo their petition, they don't need to file a second time. If, however, those who have already filed petitions wish to update their petitions, perhaps in response to some of the changes in the project, everyone who has already filed is welcome to file again, and you would just indicate on your petition that it is a supplement to your previous petition. All right, so on February 23 of this year, NEC filed with the Siding Board an amended petition to construct the LNG facility. NEC then submitted an amended zoning petition on April 19, 2019. The most significant differences between the original NEC petitions filed in August 2018 and the amended petitions filed in February and April 2019 is that NEC now proposes to construct the LNG facility on a different site in Charlton. Originally, NEC's preferred site for the facility was at 249 Sturbridge Road, or Route 20, in Charlton. NEC refers to this site as the Route 20 site. Now, NEC's preferred site for the LNG facility is at 304 South Bridge Street, which NEC refers to as the Route 169 site. Additionally, NEC has proposed two alternative sites for the facility. The Route 20 site, which was the original preferred site, is now one of two alternative sites being proposed. The third site is located west of Sherwood Lane and south of the Millennium Power Plant Facility. NEC refers to this site as the Sherwood Lane site. NEC is also proposing a number of pipeline, gas pipeline alternatives to connect its proposed facility to the existing Tennessee Gas Pipeline for its gas supply. Finally, the design for the facility's on-site LNG storage facility has been significantly revised. On-site storage in a 2 million gallon above-ground tank is the current proposal. NEC seeks approval to construct the LNG facility under general laws, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 164, Section 69J. Under this provision, the Siding Board will determine whether the facility would provide a reliable energy supply for the Commonwealth with a minimum impact on the environment at the lowest possible cost. The company also seeks approval pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3, for the individual zoning exemptions and the comprehensive zoning exemption that I mentioned earlier. To receive approval for the company's requested zoning exemptions, NEC will need to demonstrate, among other things, that the proposed project is reasonably necessary for the convenience and welfare of the public. Now, just a few words about what the Siding Board is and how our process works. The Siding Board itself is a nine-member state board appointed by the governor to review proposals to construct large-scale new and expanded energy facilities in Massachusetts. Tonight's public comment hearing constitutes the very beginning of the Siding Board's review of NEC's proposed LNG facility. Over the course of the next several months, the Siding Board will require the company to provide additional information beyond what is contained in its petitions regarding the proposal. After completion of this information gathering process referred to as discovery, the Siding Board will conduct evidentiary hearings in Boston. During evidentiary hearings, NEC will present witnesses to testify regarding all aspects of the proposed facility, including the need for, the reliability of, the environmental impacts of, and the cost of the facility. The Siding Board and any other parties to this case have the opportunity to examine the company's witnesses live, under oath, and to ask the company to provide any additional information necessary to adequately review the company's proposal. The Siding Board will make a decision on the company's petitions after the discovery process has been completed and evidentiary hearings have been completed. There are three different ways that a member of the public may get involved in this case. Each of these involves a different level of participation. The first way is to provide oral comments tonight on the record, which the Siding Board staff will take into consideration and follow up on where appropriate during the evidentiary hearing process. Alternatively, you may submit written comments addressing any aspect of the project to the Siding Board, which a number of you have already done. You could submit your written comments tonight or anytime after tonight while the proceeding is on going. I will note that comments are most helpful to staff if they're submitted within, say, the next two weeks. The second way to get involved...
I just want to, sorry, can we tell you, but when we say comment can be submitted, they said until June 12.
That's right.
There's no way to extend that for four weeks?
You would, that's right. I'm going to get to the June 12 deadline, and you're right.
This is the second, continuing town meeting, it's supposed to be something important, people have scouted at that meeting, so you're cutting it off. I just want to let you know that.
No, I appreciate that information. What day is the town meeting?
13.
13. What I would ask, and I'm hoping this won't be asking too much of you, if you could email me and put that request in writing, I will consider that to be a motion to extend the comment period beyond June 12. And maybe you could propose a date that you think would work for everyone. Okay, you're quite welcome. Okay, the second way to get involved in this case would be to formally request in writing to become an intervener in the proceeding. An intervener is a full party to the case and may participate actively in the proceeding. To become an intervener, you must demonstrate in your written request how you in particular may be, quote, "substantially and specifically affected by the proposed project." If you are granted intervener status, you become a full party and you receive a number of rights. Those include the right to request information from the company and from other parties, to offer evidence, to present witnesses during evidentiary hearings, to cross-examine all other parties' witnesses, and to submit a brief at the conclusion of the proceeding. Ultimately, it is only interveners, full parties, who have the ability to appeal the Siding Board's final decision, if that's something that someone wants to do. The third way, the final way I'm going to talk about here tonight, to get involved would be slightly less active than being a full party and intervener, and that would be to become what we call a limited participant. As the name implies, a limited participant's role is more limited than that of an intervener. As a limited participant, you would receive a copy of all documents that are produced and filed during the proceeding, and you may submit a brief to the Siding Board at the end of evidentiary hearings, in which you could set out your position regarding how the case should be decided. However, as a limited participant, you will not be able to put on evidence or call your own witnesses, and you won't have the right to cross-examine other parties' witnesses or to appeal the final decision. If you decide that you would like to submit a petition requesting intervener or limited participant status, there are specific rules concerning deadlines and the information that must be included in your petition. Copies of the Siding Board rules for intervening or participating are available, again, on that table right outside the door to the auditorium. There also is some additional information, both in the formal notice for tonight's proceeding and in the Siding Board handbook. There's a section about how do I intervene in a Siding Board proceeding. Turning to the June 12 deadline. Right now, we have a June 12 deadline for filing of petitions to intervene or petitions for limited participant status. That's our customary period that is two weeks after tonight's public hearing. But I want to note for the record that we have received this evening a request to extend that deadline by a few days, is my understanding, to allow for town meeting on June 13. And do you mind just providing your name for the record?
Julie Downe.
Pardon?
Julie Downe.
Okay, Ms. Julie Downe has made that request and, oh, down. And will be sending staff an email requesting that extension in writing. Couple other technicalities, and then we'll be on to NEC's presentation. If you do file a petition to intervene or to participate as a limited participant, you need to file your petition with the Siding Board, that can be done electronically, and you also need to file a copy of your petition with counsel for NEC, Mr. James Avery, who I think will be introducing himself shortly. The addresses for the Siding Board, including email addresses for both Siding Board and for Mr. Avery, are set forth in the public notice of tonight's hearing. Okay, and there's just the last thing, I'll repeat myself once more. If you have already filed a petition to intervene, you need not file a new one unless you have some reason for wanting to file a new or supplemental petition. All right, at this time, I invite NEC to present its project. Immediately after that, I will explain the procedures that we will follow for taking comments and questions from the audience, and we will hear from those of you who wish to speak tonight. Would ask counsel for NEC to identify himself for the record.
So, my name is James Avery. I'm with the law firm Pierce Atlin, here in Boston office, and I'm representing NEC before the Siding Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Avery. Which reminds me, the way we have set things up tonight is that NEC will be responding to questions and comments using that microphone where Mr. Avery is standing right now. We will be asking members of the audience who wish to speak to come up to the microphone there on my left, on your right. That makes it best for the court reporter to make sure that we're getting everything down for the transcript. Mr. Avery, I would ask if you would like at this time to present someone from the company to make a presentation on behalf of the company?
Yes, thank you very much. Just a brief remark, I thank you for the procedural summary. It is a bit confusing for Siding Board practice having a preferred and then must-present alternative location. NEC appreciates everyone's participation here in tonight. Part of the reason that it was a change in a preferred site, some of it was contemplated at the time of the filing last summer, but some of the comments that were received in the initial public comment hearing were considered and evaluated and weighed in on that decision. So we appreciate the Siding Board agreeing to hold another public comment hearing, so there'd be another opportunity for folks in town and some of the neighboring towns to speak and comment on the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
We have Mr. Matthew Taylor, who will be up in a moment. He's from NEC, he will be providing the initial presentation. We also have with him Boris Fravnov, who was the primary speaker last time. These two gentlemen are with the NEC Liberty Energy Trust, which is the lead developer for the project. We have an environmental consultant, A.J. DeWos, Jim Bonowski, I probably butchered that A.J., I apologize. He's doing all the environmental analysis with his firm, Epsilon. And we also have J. Gamble, Weston Sampson, who's been the company engineer managing a lot of e-engineering analysis. There's a whole host of other engineers affiliated with particular components of the project that are here. We'll be pleased to try to respond to your questions and comments, but if you're more comfortable at the end of the evening and you would like to approach any of us, some people don't like coming up to the microphone, we'll stick around for a little bit, and we'd be happy to try to address your questions, comments, or concerns. So thank you again for participating, and turn to Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Is this loud enough for everyone in the back?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm examiner, members of the EFSB, members of the town, Boris Leckman, neighbors for the project. Thank you very much for coming here this evening. My name's Matt Taylor. As Jim mentioned, I am a partner with Northeast Energy Center. We are developing this project here in Charlton, and I work with our firm on a number of energy projects, both in the U.S. and abroad, developing both energy, LNG, and other infrastructure projects in the related area. So I'm originally from Austin, I work out of our Philadelphia headquarters, but I'm excited to be back in Massachusetts working with this project. I'll be describing the enhancements we made to our proposed LNG facility in Charlton. As was mentioned, when we did the full proposal last summer, we've had an opportunity to do additional engineering and environmental assessments, and as a result of that, we changed our primary preferred site location, as was mentioned, from a Route 20 location to a Route 169 location, and we changed the tank design as a result of this facility. Those are really the only two substantive changes from the proposal that we went through last summer and on a public comment hearing in November. But we have, as we mentioned, a number of the engineering experts in the room who can walk through some of the details that led to those changes from our initial plan and can address any other questions you may have. As you heard, when we filed a petition with the Commonwealth Principal Energy Agency last summer, we had to identify alternative sites in addition to our preferred site, and that discussion had led to us identifying the Route 20 site as our preferred location, and we had identified sites on 169 as a potential alternative site. Our initial position really has not changed very much from the underlying engineering, but the locations have some different flavors, some different pros, different cons, a lot of that did come from feedback we heard from neighbors and other engineers. And, you know, we had indicated at the time, in November, that we were looking at this 169 site... 169 site very seriously and wanted to get more information about that. And obviously, for us being located near the Millennium Power Plant, it has some interesting synergies. It's an industrial park in Charlton, and it is at the nexus of a number of energy corridors within the town of Charlton, sitting on the gas transmission as well as the electric transmission lines in the Commonwealth. We're going to continue to have conversations with neighbors, with members of business community, township, government officials, selectmen, anyone who we can reach out to and show the plans in some more detail to get some more comfort with this facility as this goes through development, permitting, construction, and eventually the operation of the facility as well. And that's an important part of this public hearing here tonight and something we want to continue going forward. But as I mentioned, these additional analyses and consulting reports and engineering analysis really left us with the preferred location rooting away from Route 20 to the Route 169 location. Route 20 has a number of environmentally sensitive areas, wetlands around the location. Route 20 obviously has some traffic challenges. There was an accident here on the way over tonight. I don't know if you had to fight through that, but we are aware of some of those issues on the Route 20 side. So we had two site locations within 169, as was mentioned. We have our preferred location right near Incom, right on 169, and then we have the alternative site on 169 we call Shored Lane, just a little bit further north, closer to the Millennium Power Plant. And these two sites have different flavors, different pros, different cons, but it is where we have identified both our primary and a potential alternative site. And as mentioned, we are claiming the Route 20 is a potential alternative site as we continue this process with the state. Couple other things to mention. We are also going to be connecting a gas pipeline from the interstate pipeline that already goes through Charlton to our site. And you'll see in our filing, a couple of different routes we can locate that pipeline. Obviously, with the Millennium Power Plant, they already have an interconnection to the interstate pipeline to provide natural gas to their generator facility, and you'll see a number of short interconnection pipelines that we propose to connect our facility to the gas pipeline. As Jim mentioned, we have a number of engineering experts here who will be available, both during questions as well afterwards, to answer any specific questions people have and can share. We've built a number of facilities that are similar to this, and the teams have developed a lot of different projects and addressed a number of different environmental and site location challenges. So I think we have a good background collectively in this room to address a number of questions any neighbors may have about this facility. I would like to mention, though, first, why are we proposing this facility? As was mentioned, you know, there is a state process to prove need and prove the benefit for the ratepayers of Massachusetts, but the immediate benefit here is the ability to boost the reliability and cost savings for gas consumers in Massachusetts. The Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities has looked at this during the polar vortex a couple of years ago. Gas supplies in Massachusetts become very tight, and when that happens, there's a cascading event that gas customers are shed from the demand, and some of that impacts electric generators. You know, Millennium Power Station has to keep oil backup. They have a site on that can burn oil. And during the polar vortex, a lot of gas plants in Massachusetts had to switch from natural gas to oil and diesel. And depending how long this polar vortex lasts, there's a true threat to reliability to the electric grid if those facilities are not able to get back on the grid, back on natural gas, or back on a replacement supply of oil and diesel. So we also believe this facility will eventually, will provide benefits to customers not just in Eastern Mass, but also in Central and Western Mass. Right now, a lot of LNG that comes from, is coming from the Everett Station in Boston, to the extent that that facility is dependent on overseas natural gas coming from whether Yemen or Russia or other foreign providers, there's a reliability issue that those countries may or may not provide natural gas when Massachusetts needs it. The natural gas that we produce domestically here at the site and store for winter use will be available through national grid, through other potential utilities in the state, and potentially over longer periods of time, maybe a fueling option for other communities within Mr. County and Central Mass. And so I mentioned the Millennium Power Station being there. That is a key synergy we see in the site. As many of you can see with the site, that is a significantly large electric generating facility that's been operation in Charlton for several decades. They are dependent on natural gas coming off the same pipeline that we're going to tap into, and we want to be able to help serve them in their need to provide electricity to the Commonwealth as well as serving our needs to provide customer reliability for national grid. Longer term, we really do see LNG as a fuel that can displace oil and diesel. Oil and diesel are far dirtier when burned than natural gas, and there's a lot of industrial applications, especially in New England, that are still running on oil and diesel that you don't see in Europe, Canada, Asia, and other countries. And we believe LNG eventually will be displacing bunker fuel for maritime transport. We believe the rails which run 100% on diesel oil in the U.S. will eventually switch over to an LNG solution, and even long-distance heavy trucking in Canada is starting to take off for LNG, where you get both the cardinal benefits of fewer carbon CO2 emissions as well as nitrous oxide and particulate emissions from those fuel sources, and it also is a lower-cost domestically sourced fuel relative to overseas imported oil and distillates. Finally, we are going through the Siting Board's process. It's a very rigorous one, as any of you who've seen our material that we publish in the voucher board. We looked with our utility partner, National Grid, for facility siting options throughout Southern England, everywhere from southern Hampshire down to the Connecticut border, and this site location really had a number of things going for it. You already have a high-pressure gas transmission line going through the middle of town. There is an electric transmission infrastructure already existing in place, and we believe the industrial zone locations at Route 169 are appropriate location adjacent to the Millennium Power Plant to provide this service and do so with a minimal impact to the local environment. And as I mentioned, Route 20, the Route 20 site did have wetlands, which we are very sensitive to have any disturbance to. The 169 site, very minimal service required for that. As we're working with Epsilon and our other environmental consultants, there's a few other things we're going to be doing to mitigate environmental impact of construction. We'll be using ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel and trying to do best processes to ensure that we have as minimal an impact on the environment in Charlton as we're doing the construction process and the installation of the facility itself. It's something to keep in mind that on the coldest days in New England, about 40% of the natural gas that they use is provided by LNG. There is not enough pipeline capacity to meet demand on the very coldest days in New England, and so already National Grid has its storage facilities that it builds up over the winter to provide gas on very coldest days where people are heating their homes, electric generation's occurring at higher levels, and those facilities are traditionally supplied by Everett Terminal with imported LNG from overseas. What's happened is a lot of the LNG is now, the fuel's being switched overseas. Boston, New England has to compete with China, South Korea, Japan to provide LNG, and that is not as cost-effective as providing liquefied natural gas that we've taken off the interstate pipeline. No different than cars coming off the Mass Pike. We will take gas off the interstate pipeline on days when there's not a constraint, when there's not a traffic jam on the pipeline. We will liquefy that, which just means putting it in a very efficient appliance, kind of like a refrigerated pole box, where we will take the temperature of the gas off the pipeline to negative 260 degrees approximately, where it turns to a liquid, and we can store that at about 600 times the volume of traditional gas. Then in a liquid form, we can store that in the tank and then truck that to National Grid's storage locations throughout the greater Boston and central Massachusetts areas.
Specifics on the routes, like roads, okay?
So we'll go through that in a little bit more detail. Obviously, we are supplying National Grid's storage locations. That's, that information is public where they store. Most of them are in metro Boston, but there's a few other locations in, outside of the greater Boston area. Most of those trucks will be going up to the Mass Pike, up to Route 20, and connecting over to the, generally go east, although there are some sites that will be more north towards west or east. So we'll have, we can drive with a little more detail after that. Finally, there were some 2 million gallons. A lot of times we deal with energy, it's hard to get a sense of what is a 2 million gallon tank. And one of the things, sort of point to, is if you've seen the Millennium Power Plant, you've seen about a 1.4 million gallon tank of diesel that's sitting there at the site today. It's been sitting there for 20 years. Ours is going to be a little bit bigger than that, but it's effectively a enlarged furnace. It's a double-lined furnace where the liquefied natural gas at a very cold level, stainless steel interior tank, and it's surrounded by a thick concrete tank outside of it, which is large enough to contain any potential spills of the internal thermostat. It's relatively simple. There's not a lot of equipment that is used to keep that in place, and all of our designs will meet or exceed both federal and Massachusetts standards for design and operation of that facility. For us, the larger tank provides a little bit more flexibility. We have proposed using 10 what we call bullet tanks, 10 100,000 gallon tanks at the Route 20 site. Here, we're using a single 2 million gallon tank that, you will have some ready to show you. It's not very visible from 169. There's a slight grade, but we are well below where the solar field is off of 169, and there's a fair amount of tree coverage on that site as well. So that is sort of where the facility is today. What we believe, though, is this is still the start of the process. We are actively engaged with members of the community, the committee board, broader state representatives, and we want to keep that dialogue going, not just today, not just through the planning process, but through construction and operation of this facility. And tonight's that first step in continuing that process. We thank you for your attention, and we look forward to any comments and suggestions. And I really want to emphasize that it's not just answering questions. What we do look for, listen, and respond to questions and comments, and ideally want to be the best neighbors we can be in Charlton or any other location to do business, and we will take any sort of reasonable steps we can do to address any questions or concerns that you or your elected officials bring up in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this, at this time, we will turn to the public comment and questioning portion of tonight's hearing. I would like to describe briefly the procedures we'll be using tonight. I first will call on any federal, state, or local officials who may be present, followed by members of the public in the order that they have signed the speakers list, which again is located on that table just outside the door to the auditorium. If you have not had a chance to sign the speaker sheet and would like to speak, you may sign now or at any time during the hearing tonight. We would ask that when you're called on to speak, again, that you come up to this microphone to my left and that you state and spell your name for the court reporter and state your Are there any federal, state, or local officials here tonight who wish to make comments? Or members of their staff? Hearing none?
My name is Jonathan Sanborn. I'll spell F-W-E-T. My address is 12 Jennings Road in Charlton, and I am a member of the Charlton Board of Health. So tonight, there was some talk about how the facility is contacting some of the town boards and officials, but to the best of my knowledge, I don't think we have gotten any real official communication about the facility. That's the first point. I had some questions, but I think I'll start off with some traffic safety concerns, just to bring these up. I'm not sure if there's a traffic engineer that's involved with this. I would assume there is at some point, but I'll just bring up a few points here. I won't take up too much time. First of all, last year, according to the Telegram Gazette, there was a story in the Telegram Gazette regarding traffic accidents in Charlton. Over the past five years, there was a 57% increase in traffic accidents within the town. Furthermore, Officer McGrath, who's here tonight, who was part of the Civilian Traffic Commission that did the study, said that the Route 20 intersection at Route 169 has been identified as the location where the most major accidents and injuries occur. And actually, I can, I can provide, I've got some copies here if you'd like. Secondly, I talked with a state police accident reconstruction specialist, and he has done some accident, fadals and near fadals, they get called out for these, and he told me that his, his big issue is Route 20. Now, as most of people here in town recall, about 15 years ago, November of 2004, 3.65 miles of Route 20 was redone from the center of town and going towards the Oxford line, and that has helped tremendously in reducing accidents. However, the other parts of town heading towards Sturridge or Oxford have not changed. And according to the accident reconstruction person from the state police, the state standard lane width is 15 feet, okay, for state highways. The minimum is supposed to be 12 feet, and yet if you go on Route 20 out west towards Sturridge, there are sections of that where the lane widths are as little as nine feet. Rather concerning, especially since between those four lanes opposing traffic, there's about a foot of rubble strips. There's no breakdown lane, there's no shoulder, there's just a guardrail, just to throw you back into the traffic. So then I started thinking, well, jeez, how wide are these tractor trailers? And again, I have copies of this. This is from a transportation website that says that the width of an average trailer is generally 102 inches broad, eight and a half feet wide. So you've got, if they're going down the middle of that lane, it's nine feet wide, they've got about three inches on either side of the trailer before they're on the lane. So I just hope that they would take this into consideration. I know that there's other issues, so I'll let people speak to that. In the meantime, I will hand over three copies of each of what I just presented to you, if I could. Thank you.
Edward Jowett. And I signed in earlier, but I realized we're drawing that up there. I doubt the issue too. So my name is Kathleen Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R, K-A-T-H-L-D-E-N, and I live at 96D Baker Pond Road in Charlton. I'm the vice chairman of the Local Board of Health. I found out about this meeting from a friend of mine who was on the Southbridge Town Council, and who was very surprised that the Board of Health had not been notified or contacted in any way. And I went to your website, and there's a whole list of town departments that have been contacted and that you've been in touch with, which I think is excellent. I just, I'm a little bit uneasy about the fact that the Board of Health has not been contacted, and perhaps there's no health issues to be dealt with, but I kind of doubt that. So I would like to, I would like to express my concern about that. I would also like to ask to become a limited participant. I would also like to ask to become a limited participant, and I would also like to invite somebody from the company to come to our next board meeting, which is on June 11th, and discuss with the foreboard some of the concerns that the other members may also have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. But I'm going to assume the company will meet with Ms. Walker if she's able to stay until the end of the period to discuss the June 11th, the possible June 11th. Robert, oh.
Sorry.
No, it's my fault. When I have my glasses on, I can't see distance, so.
You don't want to see me, trust me.
Please, go ahead.
Bill, B-I-L-F-B-I-L-L Borowski, B-O-R-O-W-S-K-I, 69 Haggerty, H-G-G-E-R-T-Y Road. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. And let me say, before I get in trouble with my colleagues, I'm not speaking on behalf of them tonight. Question, first of all, I want to thank the group because I think your outreach to the Board of Selectmen has been great so far. During our last meeting, you presented to us all the questions that I raised, and again, I think for the benefit of the group, if we could elaborate a little bit more, is, after speaking to a lot of constituents and just residents, that there's a concern around the request for the zoning verances going outside of the zoning Board of Appeals, and I was hoping that members of the organization could speak to that for this crowd a little bit more. I mean, again, I think there's an understanding around, there's a certain state expertise. However, I think it's difficult to justify to many people who would need to go in front of the zoning Board of Appeals if they want to put a shed 14 feet from their property line, and they would have to do that, whereas an enormous facility can bypass our local board altogether and petition the state for something that is wildly outlaw zoning. So again, I'd appreciate it if, at some point this evening, if members from the applicant's team could address that once again for the larger crowd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Avery, would the company like to address that question now or?
Whatever your preference would be.
Let's take care of it now, then we'll move on.
Thank you. I may. I've permitted a lot of facilities, and zoning bylaws tend not to fit real squarely with a lot of energy facilities, and often are inconsistent with some of the design and safety codes that are there. There's a number of things that just aren't, one of the things, for example, is a requirement that a gas tank be underground within your zoning bylaw. By design, by code, needs to be above ground. So there's at least a couple of real sort of stimeys that would, if we were to comply with the zoning bylaw, would not be as safe as those standards would be. So it's rather common practice to go ask for the zoning exemptions. But I think one of the things that we've attempted to do and agreed to do is to, because we can't get a, if you will, a solid approval from the zoning officials that would enable the company to build the facility in a safe, compliant manner, to go through the same process informally and sit down with the zoning officials in the town, and if there was conditions, we'll agree to those that might be put in and order, just like the people you mentioned that would have to go in for the shed. We'll do that informally, but there's a couple areas that, there's just this inconsistency, which is why we bring it to the state experts to make sure that we design it safely and consistently. So we try to be respectful of the interest of the town, but also recognize that the experts at the site board will be the ones that really have to decide on the design that we propose, to make sure it's consistent with requirements. I hope that addresses your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Robert Puchalski.
For the record, my name is Frank Mulvarney, but I'm the chair of the zoning and appeals at Polon D A R E, he's like the coach. Excuse me, losing my voice a little bit. Just for the record, the company did reach out to the zoning Board of Appeals about two weeks ago for an informal meeting with the chair at that time. The board, I am speaking on behalf of the board, but the board has authorized me an open meeting to speak tonight. The board decided that, at that time, they didn't necessarily see the benefit, I guess the board was looking for more of a secure meeting with the entire board in an open meeting forum. I don't think at this time the board is necessarily opposed to the project, but we can't necessarily make any sort of zoning determination because they haven't really seen us in any manner as of yet. So hopefully council will contact and set something up through our secretary for some sort of meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulvarney.
My, I have my name on the list as well, so.
Oh, okay. And I note for the record that the zoning Board of Appeals has filed a petition to change from the elected procedure. Jay or Mary Beth Saja. You're right, you're absolutely right. Robert, please come up to the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Robert Puchalski, P-U-C-H-A-L-S-K-I. My office is located at 318 South Bridge Road in Charleston. And just a couple of quick, easy, simple questions, I guess is, number one, I'm concerned, or not concerned, but I'd like to know what the hours of operation would be in this facility? Number one. Secondly, the noise pollution that it's going to create, and how long it's going to take to construct a facility, when it'll come online from date of construction? And I, and if there's going to be any, any odors that are going to be committed from the operation at the area that the community is going to be impacted by? And if so, how are they going to be treated, convenient?
Thank you very much, Mr. Puchalski. Does the company want to address Mr. Puchalski's four points at this time?
Yes, please, if I could turn to Mr. Brown.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Is it better? Like any energy facility, this facility will be running 24 hours a day, and most of the time it will be doing availability of gas, so it will be warm time of the, relative to noise from the facility. Massachusetts State, Commonwealth have fairly strict protocols, so what we've been doing, and that's why it's taken extra time, additional time during summertime and during wintertime, we have to approve the protocol and to install noise detectors. These noise detectors will register ambient noise at any point of sensitive receptors. It's a closes, residence closes, office, any of these facilities. Then we have to design a facility that effectively noise from our facility would be non-audible, so the difference would be 3, 4, 5 decibel relative to these receptors. So they would have to be low noise. So in some cases, we will be using certain silencers, in some cases, fans would slow down penetration, in some cases, equipment would be placed in the building. So the idea would be to make facility some literally non-audible. It would not emit any doors, so it would be impossible to recognize from this point of view. And, and as discussed, we will continue to stay in touch, we'll continue to take advice, and we will continue to inform and to learn from the community and from the audience, what is the best way and how to be helpful neighbor. Construction schedule a little bit hard to predict because Massachusetts winter, so if, compared, it's probably around, when all equipment is ordered, it's probably about one summer long construction cycle. Depends when you start construction cycle, depends how quickly the winter is coming. The, if you receive the approval, if you start the process, most likely it will take summer, and most likely it will be commissioned next spring. So most of the equipments are skid waste, so it's pre-fabricated, it's pre-manufactured. So when it arrives on site, it will be assembled, directed, interconnected, and commissioned into operations. So most parts of the equipments, all parts of the equipments are standard, they've been around Massachusetts for half a century, obviously environmental controls, safety controls have been improved, but nitrogen double expander, these, for example, in Springfield, has been working for the last almost 50 years.
Hours of operation, is this going to be 24 hours?
24 hours.
So that means traffic, 24 hours?
Relative to trucks, so under the agreement to supply to seasonal energy facilities over 24 hours cycle, there will be around 12, 14 trucks coming to this facility. Most of them will be coming during regular day hours, so it will be unusual to have a night market facility. Will we follow up quickly because it's related, if I can?
Sure, please.
Traffic question. So yes, we looked into audit, safety audit of interception 169 and 20, so we're planning to work accordingly with this audit, and yes, we require to submit a traffic study related to this overall number of trucks minus, and every car on the road is significant, obviously, but general 12, 14 trucks a day should be an overwhelming relative to load.
Thank you. Now back to Jay and Mary Beth Saja.
My name is Mary Beth Saja, and I'm C-Z-A-J-A. We are at 278 South Bridge Road in Charlton. Our business is North American Tool and Machine Corporation, and we're the little L-shaped piece of property right below Sherwood Lane, Sherwood Road property. I have a list of questions, and I know the Bruins are on tonight, so we all might want to hear something else, but my first question, I was actually hoping, I appreciate the town officials that are here tonight, I was hoping that there would be more town officials because I'm not sure if some of my questions are really from the town of Charlton, or for your board, or for our new friends here at NE State. My first question is, I would like to know, is there any tax incentive that the town of Charlton has offered this facility? Run the airway, okay.
No, nothing been offered.
Okay, the next question would be. The next question would be, since thankfully you've done so many of these facilities, what has the history been on the effect of property value?
Depends, because these facilities are located, as I mentioned just in Commonwealth, they're located in Boston, they're located in Providence, they're located in Springfield. So in our case, what we hope, as Matt discussed, that the facility will be actually helpful, good neighbor, because one of the logics is that facility effectively allows access to a pipeline, gas pipeline, that are coming along, and we hope that not only facility will be taking the benefit of this pipeline, because right now, town does not really benefit from this pipeline. You have high voltage transmission corridor, you have the pipeline, but you don't have benefits of this. In this case, Charlton will start to benefit from this supply of gas, and we believe that Charlton commercialized and just easy to use, will start to see benefits of natural gas. If, just one of the records related to Massachusetts Energy website, the difference by heating your house with gas relative to heating your house with electricity is $3,500. So you tell me how big difference in the budget of a regular Charlton family, annual $3,500 is? Does it increase value of the house if you heat it by cleaning fuel, which is less expensive? Or does it diminish the value of the house? So we hope that it will be not just synergies with the bigger facilities, but synergies with commercial facilities, and we hope that it will be a helpful neighbor, town of Charlton.
Do you know how many homes in the town of Charlton actually use natural gas to heat? Are they oil, electric, or natural gas?
Most of it will be oil, propane, or electric.
So version of that would be a cost, okay, that wasn't on my list, I was just curious. A lot, again, I know last time that you guys were out, you talked about the security of these facilities, obviously, in the climate we live in, sitting on top of what was 1 million, and now 2 million gallons is a little concerning. I did notice an interesting fact, though, so I had notes from our last meeting, that you said 12 to 24 trucks a day with a 1 million gallon facility. I think it's interesting that that stayed about the same number for a 2 million gallon facility. But again, talking about the security of the facility itself, is the town of Charlton prepared in the event that there is a situation happening at this facility?
Just to put it in perspective, and that is a good question, and safety is a high priority, and safety is an important aspect, and the amount of safety solutions related to these plans, and so far, all of these facilities in Boston, Providence, Springfield, they served Massachusetts for half a century in a safe way, so we hope you'll continue this process, serving that base. Just to put it in perspective, 300, let's put it 400 feet away from this facility, you have an oil storage tank with 1.3 million gallons, energy density of 1.3 million gallons of oil, and 2 million gallons of energy is the same. So you have these facilities already in Charlton, with the same or higher energy density. So in general, it does not, does not make it more safe, less safe, only in this case, usually you'll have around the oil tank, you don't really have to have dikes, you don't really have to have a concrete wall, auto repair system, you don't really have to have all other safety equipment, in this case, you do have additional safety.
I appreciate that, thank you. Again, going back to the construction, if you were to be in the Sherwood, the Sherwood site, that is very ledge, that's a lot of ledge, would there be blasting involved in the construction of this facility?
So far, we designated preferred site as 169. Your reference to Sherwood Lane is appropriate at age and place at 169, we are not planning to do blasting, so we plan that it would be just mechanical work relative to.
But I asked about Sherwood.
Sherwood designated as no distant alternative, so we frankly did not study what type of site preparations would it require, and we did not do a geotag study. For 169, we did both. We did the geotag study, and we know where the ledge is, and we know that most likely it will not require blasting, and we also did seismic work.
So it wouldn't be safe to say, since you didn't do any of that for Sherwood, and you did do it for Route 20, and you did do it for 169, but you didn't do it for Sherwood, should that even be considered an alternative site for the purpose of this meeting?
It would be because the view is we want.
I guess that's the question of the board. Why do you have, if they haven't done? Why, if they haven't done the homework on Sherwood, why is that being considered an alternative site? I'm just, I don't do this for a living, so I don't know.
Let me answer as an applicant in this case. So just different requirement of form look is required for preferred and alternate site. And even for preferred site, geotech at this stage.
You speak up, please.
Even for preferred site, geotech and seismic are not required. So we just wanted to be sure that we don't have any surprises. We wanted to be sure that we completed our form look as much as we can. And we wanted to be sure that we will have answers relative to any questions on the preferred site.
I appreciate that. Two reasons why I'm bringing that up. One, what feeds my family, my employees' families, is the fact that we run a precision CNC machine shop. Blasting right behind our facility might be a little bit of a problem. In fact, it could be a big one. Secondly, probably a lot of the people in this room have already gone through an enormous water problem based on the groundwater in that area thanks to another large corporation of Cassello Waste Management. I don't think that the town of Charlton would like to see this, the water table messed with again with blasting in any particular area. I'm not going to speak for the people here in Charlton. What I would say is, you know, having to shower with bottled water, using bottled water for everything was probably really terrible. So again, I think that there's a lot more research that has to go into that.
We appreciate your comments and the talks and intercom. And that's why we not really plan to have blasting. And also facility will not be consuming water.
To the signboard, I appreciate all the environmental concerns that you have. I think that it's great working with conservation commissions. I'm not sure if the town of Charlton has a stormwater authority, but I'd be interested to know if there is a stormwater plan and erosion management plan. That also, I'd be very interested to know. I'd also be interested to know that when LeDium built their plant, there was a conservation restriction on land adjacent to their facility. And I'd be interested to know how this would affect that particular piece of property. Aside from that, I think it's also important to take into consideration what happens with the people. You know, you can worry about the environment a lot, but we need to worry about the taxpayers as well. Again, going back to the property values, I haven't met any person that when we've said we're coming to this hearing tonight, that says, "Yeah, I want to live right next to that. That sounds great." So, you know, it's a lot of value here. You know, our business is very important to us. I'm sure these people's homes are very important to them. That, you know, when you take into consideration environmental stuff, which I sit on the stormwater board, much for feeler, but I'm conservation commissions, I'm a local preservation association. I'm very into the environment. However, I think that the people here are very important too. And I think there's a lot of things that need to be addressed with property values. Moving on to, who owns the three sites now? Or do you have to, you have to try and purchase those?
We have an option agreement related to preferred site. And to answer your previous question, we are not going through the conservation land. And to my knowledge, this land was contributed to conservation easements during the power plant construction and after construction. So it was part of, part of an agreement between the power plant project and the town.
Because the connections, though, would have to go with conservation, because they would run, one potential one is like right along Katy Brook. So conservation would definitely have oversight on that.
The conservation commission you'll have, and we filed with the conservation commission, and we did very extensive weapon delineation and design study. And to exactly right, it's a careful spot. And we'll try to maintain all the buffer zones related to interconnection lines. And they will be not going through the conservation land.
Regarding the connection, if you were at the 304 site and going down, along 169, that was just paved. What's the, like, the construction project on that? Because then you would be blocking two accesses to our facility, incoms facility, the new little package store that's trying to make it again and again and again. A lot of disruption there, so I was just curious to know what the plan would be for that.
The plan is not to touch any pavements related to 169. So we're basically on an unpaved side of shoulder of 169. We have met and had discussions with DVT related to this. And it's obviously also their preference not to go for any pavement.
Because our subject is going to be right there. Our subject isn't that far up in 169, so that doesn't make sense. How many full-time employees will this facility employ?
Usually when facility runs, it would, it saves any gas plants. They probably will have most of the time about three people on site.
Trucking companies, are they local? Are they employed by any city or are they...
No, they're not. They're not employed by any city, not owned by any city. Trucking company is local. Trucking company is Transgas. Transgas is a Massachusetts company. They have been in this business for more than 50 years. And you definitely seen their trucks, because right now they truck longer routes on Route 20 and Masspike. They're going from Everett to Lubbock. They're going from Everett to Percham. They go in different places. So this is Union, Transgas Company. And as I mentioned, they've been in this business for half a decade. And they do have stellar safety record.
How about the construction company? Will that be a local construction company as well?
We have few representative from a construction company. It is a local company, bond, and they do construct a local Commonwealth. They have enough experience, one of the latest projects they do in construction for MIT. And I'm sure the audience is asking even tougher questions. I'm sure that they do meet pretty high technological standards.
I would just like to see as many local people involved as possible. I'm supposed to be a...
Yes, so far, I think I'm only the one who is not local. So that's why I'm speaking. The rest of my team is local. A western Sampson is local. Massachusetts are breaking from a visitor office. AJ is local. So long Massachusetts Associates, bond is local. So here's that, he's local. So so far, as I said, it's only me who's speaking.
We've kind of talked about jobs, yeah.
I mean, it is the careful balance.
We can only have one person speaking at a time.
We do enjoy cooperation, but we also need to be sure that we will hopefully be finding the best expertise.
Just one last thing about the trucking comments and all the accidents on Route 20. You know, we lived through Route 20 under construction. We lived through 169 under construction. We lived through accidents in that area all the time. We lived through an accident out on the Masspike in that area gets backed up all the time. We've lived through the dump trucks going to Cassello that lined 169 that we couldn't, our employees couldn't even get into the business in the morning. You know, we've lived through all that. But the concern is really the accidents and the safety. Will any city be willing to help the town of Charlton upgrade perhaps some of their emergency management equipment or staffing? You know, I can give you an example. You know, sometimes with large companies, like a Walmart goes in somewhere all of a sudden, the police force is overburdened. You know, that happened in the town of Leicester, for example. Is there anything, any consideration of that?
We started the process and we opened to ideas. And we do appreciate this comment, and we are very serious about this comment. So we engaged with all three emergency response groups, Charlton, Southbridge, Torbridge. And step one, so we will be sending them to the Massachusetts Academy, Emergency Response Academy. And if they will come back and say, in addition to this academy, we need this, we need that, we definitely will try to do our best to be sure that people are well-trained and well-trained.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time. Sorry, I feel these... Kathleen Bro.
No comments.
Jane Brenn? There, I apologize, but there is a name after Jane whom I cannot dis...
The address is 19 Meadow Lane, and I believe her first name is Greg?
No comments. Thank you. David Mark Valen?
I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you. Sandy Down?
We are here for...
No, okay. Sandra, S-A-N-D-R-A, DAM, D-A-M, 100 T. Hall Road. I'll say a couple of questions that have not yet been answered. A question about the gas metering station that's going on the back compressor station 264. Could somebody explain what that is? How big a facility that would be? Pardon?
Okay, a response.
Yes, it is. And if you would just, for the record, speak your name and who you represent.
Jay Gamble, G-A-M, D-L-E. With Weston Sampson, who are the owner's engineer for NEC. So the gas meter station proposed off of, I'm assuming you're prefacing one of the alternate routes off of Cockburn Hill Road? Yes, so the gas meter station is roughly would be 100 by 100 foot area with a building that would contain metering equipment that Kenner Morgan would use to meter the gas that would flow to the facility.
Would this facility increase the operating time of the current compressor station to be 44/7, 365 days a year?
No, it's not expected that the NEC facility would increase the operations of the current Kenner Morgan compressor station.
And are you adding existing pipelines? Like, are you increasing the size of the pipelines that are going through the residential areas?
No, just adding a pipeline that would feed gas to the facility. But we wouldn't be increasing the size of any of the existing Tennessee gas pipelines.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have one comment I could make, if that's possible. You have this ambient noise, like you say, you test for. I mean, I live right next to the Tennessee gas pipeline, and I was assured that that would not be very loud. But I can tell you it's extremely loud when you're living next to it, and it is very disruptive. So I'm not really sure once this facility is in for those neighbors that are living right there. It's a lot different than what we would like to do. Thank you.
Scott Jem... Jamaica?
Wamble.
Jamaica.
My name is Scott, S-C-O-T-T, Lamica, L-A-M-I-C-A. All right. I live on 257 Southbridge Road. I have the biggest trophy I ever had before. I look at the power plant. And when that was built, they told me that they put warnings on my house. Sure, no problem. $3,500 blocks later, 10 years later, they disintegrated. No problem. Another $3,500 on top of that. That's what they promised me. Another thing, traffic. Does anybody have records on how many accidents were on 169 this year? No, right? Another problem, noise. I live right next to LMP, the machine shop, and the new, the power plant. We hear noise all the time. The steam letting go. And others, the crane moving. We don't complain about it, but now it's time. I got half a million dollar house. The value dropped because of the power plant. Another thing I didn't complain about. The power plant shoots their rifles and shoots their guns across the street. Does anybody know about that? No. Now what happens? They go hunting over on that other side. There's plenty of deer. What happens if somebody made a mistake and shot them in their tanks? Nothing said, right? Another thing, Route 20, they put the treehouse in. Not a bad thing, but they didn't plan it up good. Look at the traffic now. Who's eating it? Charlie. There's other things that bother me. I planned living there for a long time. This is our dream house. If you want to come by and check it out, it's three and a half acres. Would you guys love to see that in your front window? Or if it blows up? Or do I tell my daughter goodbye? Do we know when this is going to explode? What kind of warning do we have? You people don't live there. Would you love to live next to one of these plants? If you do, I have a vacant apartment right next to it. Come and join me. Stay for a while. I got an in-ground pool, hot tub, everything. Nice three and a half acres with a brook running through it. That's all I got to say. I think you guys should do your homework.
Thank you, Mr. Jamaica.
Lamica.
John Kloski?
John Kloski of JOHMPULWSKI. Live at 87 Old North Woodstock Road in Southbridge. I don't live in Charlton. Although we have the same state representative, I don't see him here. I'm disappointed about that, because you're a state board, correct? I, my primary question when I signed, I was curious how many trucks would be coming. I, it's my understanding, looking at similar-sized facilities, that they produce about a quarter million gallons a day or approximately. So that seems consistent with the figure given by these gentlemen. But your town has taken a lot over the years. The gas spills from the turnpike gas station. The horrendous situation that many of us are rather certain comes from the landfill that was approved. Something that I feel badly about, although the town approved it, I felt that the state failed to do its job. When you have a small community that handled enough waste, I know this isn't a waste issue, but we handled the waste of, well, 95% of the waste that went there was from out of our town. It was really beyond the capacity of our board health to manage it. So the state kind of intervenes in that it allows things to go to small towns. And the small towns often don't have the resources to be able to have proper oversight. And when you call the DEP or the Mass Environmental Police, they're often reluctant to act until something bad happens. Then they show up. And that's my primary concern, even though if I applied to be an... And that's my primary concern, even though, if I applied to be an intraveinor, I'd probably be turned down because I live probably four miles, or at least three miles from the site. But I'm concerned that these little towns get bullied by corporations. These men seem like polite people that are answering questions. But beware, some people concerned about reduced property values. My concern, like in Southbridge, we were told we're gonna have 600 jobs at the industrial park, and right now I don't think we have six jobs on the industrial park. We're, the promises get made. Money, what if you're told you're gonna make a lot of money because of the tax there? Even then, I just want to remind people that when a community or town government accepts large amounts of money, there's some things that can't be replaced by money. You can't, those people north of the landfill, that, I mean, 99 homes that have contaminated wells. You have a drinking of water, but they're still, right now, washing in these chemicals that can permeate the skin. I don't really know about the environmental and health problems related to CNG. I appreciate that CNG is cleaner than other forms of fuel. But I, I just hope that the state, you folks, appreciate your responsibility. Remember, that when you deal with towns that only have a population of around 20,000 people, that they don't have the resources, and so please, keep that in mind. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plasky. Dan Butler?
Catherine, if I may, I think we skipped the first two people on the list, Joe Lewandowski and Mr. Jalbert.
All right, let me just check.
Well, I read the Mr. Plakowski at the beginning.
I'm sorry, what were the names again?
Mr. Lewandowski, Joe Lewandowski.
I called that name. All right, and what is the second name that you?
Ed Jalbert. Second on the list.
Yes, I do see that, and I have both of them checked off, but obviously that was an error on my part. Why don't we then take the two of you now? Mr. Lewandowski. Mr. Jalbert.
Joe Lewandowski, L-A-W-E-N-D-O-W-S-K-I. Live on 39 Harrington Road in Chatham. And I've been sending messages back and forth to the siting board, and I keep on revising it because I have more questions. And I don't really want to read these word for word, but I get some really, really key questions, right? You're talking about, I put, a 2 million gallon explosive device in a tight corridor, very close to a highway. Very close to at least nine residences and four businesses on Route 169. Another nine residences on Harrington Road. And a great number of new residents in Southbridge, all very close. How anybody in their mind, in their even thought process would think of putting that many people in that many facilities in such great danger? These facilities are not as safe as people say they are. You look at the articles, you can see many explosions, because people who take care of them do not take care of them. And that becomes a major problem in my, in my mind. So this site, which is right on Route 169, who surprised me where it was. I thought it would be backed up into woods, and never knew there was a solar display here up there. Is absurd. Is absolutely absurd to even think about something like that. And what is this company planning to do for the town? In case of an emergency? Are they planning to train every single fire person and police department, person in Chatham, Southbridge, Stirbridge, Webster, who will all be on common assist, to come and assist? I've heard claims that they've offered only pay for one person from each of those departments. Come on, let's be real. That's, that is absurd overall. And then you think of the size. What is the size of a 2 million gallon tank? He says, oh, look up at a diesel tank up at Millennium. No, Millennium, diesel is not explosive. This gas is an explosive device. What is the size of the trucks that are gonna be done, coming up and down the road? How many people really understand what you're facing in this situation? I had, I had deep concerns about all of this. Now you're talking, oh, 169 is a better location. Why is it better location? Because the company in charge of NEC is a hedge company, and they're looking for a lowest-cost solution. Now, that does not make sense to me. And then they're talking about, as I read in the article, this is going to be a hybrid solution, which has never been done. You really want to be experimental? You want to allow an experimental solution in Chatham? Come on, that does not make sense at all. And then you've got this site. How about people, you know, fire departments access in case of an emergency? Is there enough room on 11 acres? You want to put a big facility like that on only 11 acres? You want to put a facility like this on 100-plus acres? So you have buffers around the actual plane. So that if there is some emission light, is there, there's some gas escaping, it has time to dissipate before it reaches the general public. I mean, it doesn't make any, none of this makes any sense to me. You know, is there enough water available onsite or for any pipeline? You know, I look at what you did, you know, this is, I see the reason for a facility in Chatham because of the pipeline. But I don't see this or Millennium as an ideal spot. Your original site one, in my opinion, is probably better, even though they talk about wetland protection. Now, if they're concerned about wetlands, that means there's going to be wetout. There's gonna be dangerous materials going into the ground. What about the people who live in that area? You know, I, like I said, I have a long list. I don't really want to go through all, everything in statement, but... And then what is the real number of trucks? They talked about 12 a day. Come on, let's be real. It's gotta be more than 12 a day. And they're gonna talk, and then you've got 169? They're gonna go to Route 20 anyways. These vehicles are going to Route 20 anyway. And going through, as the gentleman said, through one of the worst intersections in Chatham area. You want that to continue to happen, that would be a disaster. Any accident in that area. The closest access to the mass pipe is the Route 20 location. Put a light there. Put warning signs that there's a light, and have it activated when a truck is leaving that site. So that people know. I know it's not the greatest access point, you know, as I drive by and check it, but there is a solution in that site. You know, and then ledge, I mean, they said there's no ledge over at that 304 site. I can't believe it. There is nothing in Chatham that does not have ledge. Absolutely nothing, in my experience here in town. I don't care what your survey say. They're just blasting. You're not gonna put a pipeline along 169 without damaging the highway, which the state's paid a massive amount of money to repair and put it into good running condition, right? And if you're gonna come down from the pipeline through what I call the marine property, under a wetland area, under a brook, you know, I don't see that as danger, but I see that as a concern. Because most of the people don't pay attention to the ledges they get from your group, which has done outstanding job as far as the presentation materials. But you have to take the time to read about it. I don't know what else to say. You know, if they want to come into town, let them pay 28, 25 million for the new safety building in town. Let them guarantee so much a year in the town of Chatham, like Millennium does. I think they've known it. I think this would be worth at least five million a year, and more, but that's my opinion.
Don't sell out the town.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's it. I can go on forever. I'm sorry for taking that time. I just hope that people think more clearly about where this site should be. Thank you.
So let's try again, Edward Jalbert?
Weaver.
I'm sorry. Oh, you don't need to speak, okay. Dan Butler? I'm sorry, my apologies. You are next after Kathleen Waters, I think it's Waters. That's what I thought. So then it is now Julie Dowling. Yes, it is.
Hi, Julie Dowling, D-O-W-E-N, 15 Stafford Street. I just want to say I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. Because I've attended a lot of meetings, and I do a lot of things in Wester, and I just want to know, where's the traffic study now? Like, it's really confusing that we're not able to look at these materials now. They changed the site or the preferred site, but yet there's no specific traffic studies. Everything's coming down the road, but yet this is the public comment night. And please don't think this is all the people in Chatham that care. There's Bruins on, and there's a funeral in town, okay? So we're gonna make sure that people can write in before that deadline to let you know that this idea is insane. Okay, because when I see that map right there, zoom out of that map, and you're gonna see we have, let's talk about the elephant in the room. The dump, LFG. Let's mix a lot of LFG that's gonna be here, landfill gas for 30 years. And let's add that next to the LNG, which I'm also upset about because just yesterday I was on your website, and it said 1 million gallons. And I want to know why all these changes have been made since February, yet your website's not being updated. The Health Department's not being notified in meetings. I'm not getting anything in the mail. I just want to let you know I did start Facebook Citizens Against LNG in Chatham, and I recommend everybody to go to it. So you can see, let's talk about the groups. What's upsetting me is that no one's mentioned any safety concerns here tonight, other than what was brought up by people here. We're not talking about when we have the dump here, then we're gonna put in this LNG. We have an airport right behind it all. You know, it's a recipe for disaster. I just want to know how much more Chatham can take. Like, how much more do people in Chatham need to take? We had the Exxon situation, which caused water, severe, severe quality of life issues, okay? And we have the landfill situation, which is capped-off dump. And you go, I drive by it 14 times a day, and that's not a lie. And it stinks, it's gross, and everybody promised, oh, we're gonna make it smell great all the time, every day. Like, you can come here and talk, 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 but you need to show more. I would have expected some presentation, like, I have a video up of what it looks like having all these tanker trucks 24 hours a day. And don't forget, your school buses are on Route 20. Your school buses are on 169, okay? And we all know about the Treehouse Brewery, the poor planning that went into actually expanding. When I myself witnessed two people taking three-point turns on Route 20 in the low-speed lane. What's gonna happen when that tanker truck comes flying down? Okay? It's just, it's unrealistic. I don't even know why we're wasting everybody's time going further without that traffic study. Okay, because I really believe at the end of the day, I don't think you're gonna be saying that it's gonna be reasonably necessary for the benefit of the public to put this location, all these towns, in danger. 169 is pretty much the only way in and out of Southbridge. Like, you have no idea how much traffic that, that takes. I'm saying, I don't care if you have one site, two site, three site, no, in Chatham. And let's hope you're not. Your fight hasn't even started. You might think it's, oh, you've gotten away with it so far, you haven't. We've just started. And we're gonna make sure there's a sign in everybody's yard, and we're gonna hold you accountable to all these traffic studies. I want to know if, if LFG mixes with LNG, and we have a situation, whether it be human, mechanical, shrapnel, a plane falling into it, someone shooting it. Because, you know, what no one's ever talked about too, doesn't this make us a nice international terrorist target? We now have a pipeline, we're gonna have 2 million things of LNG at all times, all these trucks coming in and out, an airport right behind it, and a giant dump that, don't forget, had an eight-day fire. Do you understand when a fire happens at these dumps? It's not tomorrow. It doesn't go out. It goes on and on and on. I mean, it is so much safety issues here, that I find it hard to believe anyone on this panel can say, yes, people of Chatham, your lives are more, are less important than providing heat to people. Yes, heat's important, but it's not more important than our property, our value, our life. Don't forget, Citizens Against LNG in Chatham. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dowling. Kathy Christopherson.
I'm certainly not here to follow that, so I just...
Thank you very much.
Can I just say one last thing? I'm sorry for jumping back in, but I forgot to point out that we've had two natural disasters around here. Tornado, the path of the tornado literally went where you're trying to build. I'm not saying another one's gonna come down the pipe tomorrow, but what if it does? Then we had Hurricane Diana actually wiped away houses, right down in the corner, 169 Route 20. Lives gone, lives lost. Okay, what's gonna happen when the next hurricane comes? You didn't come here with one safety plan. I don't know anything about what your safety precautions are. I know nothing, and that's wrong.
Thanks. Kirsty Petchi?
Good evening, my name is Kirsty Petchi. I'm at, Kirsty, K-I-R-S-T-I-E, last name Petchi, P-E-C-C-I. I'm an environmental attorney, but I live at 138 McGilpin Road, which seems to be in the center of all the different scenarios that you've put together here. I want to step us back a second, because we've talked a lot about the safety hazards, which are really real and should be considered very seriously by everybody. But I think we're ignoring another elephant in the room, which is fossil fuels are on their way out. This is like... This is like, this is like putting a saddle factory in in 1930, okay? We're not gonna be using natural gas pretty soon. And while there's an argument that gas is less polluting in some ways than coal and oil, it is very polluting. And shame on you for expanding a system that has literally put the world on fire. All right, a step before that, this gas is coming, it's fracked gas. Look up fracked gas, and what happens when you frack gas. Everywhere you frack gas, you are building a, basically, a little mini Superfund site right there. You've got a pit of water that's contaminated. We don't even always know what the contaminants are. And this gas is not in any way, shape, or form. This gas we're getting clean. And what I mean by that is, first of all, it's methane, right? So some of it is inevitably going to escape. Even if we don't have a horrific accident, or, you know, which could happen, even if we, which just did happen, in fact, in Lawrence, if you remember, right? People died, people lost their homes. They're still cleaning that up. Even if you don't have that kind of situation, methane is going to escape. The most, the best sealed methane containment is usually 3% to 4% escaped. That's a daily technique. So that methane is going right into the environment, and that is one of the worst contaminants for climate change. So methane should stay in the ground, keep the oil in the soil, okay? Furthermore, this fracked gas is full of radon and other contaminants. Those toxins, just like the landfill gas, which is methane, but also has all those other contaminants in it. We can smell the landfill gas, at least you know when to go indoors, because you're being, you know, poisoned by that gas. This gas you won't be able to smell, maybe, but it's got those same contaminants in it. So that's another problem that we have to take very seriously. We're making, this facility will make everyone in the region sicker. And for what? All it's gonna do is slow down the transition we need to make to clean energy. And by clean, I don't mean burning landfill gas, I don't mean burning trash, I don't mean, you know, these other false solutions. I mean wind, I mean solar. And we're seeing that transition locally. That's where the jobs are, and that's where the future is. So there is no reason for us to approve any of these alternatives. And that's, this is a shell game. You know, keep people, maybe it'll go there, so it won't be nearby home. It's gonna be near all of our homes, and it's unacceptable. So what I would ask is, first of all, we haven't really gotten a count, because a lot of people don't like to speak. Who here is against this, if we could just have a quick, all right? And then secondly, please do call your reps and your senators. They should be here tonight. This is a travesty. So Senator Fatman, Senator Gobi, Representative Durant, and Representative Smola, give them a ring tomorrow, and let them know what you learned. I appreciate the time that you folks are putting into this. I know this is your job, but this is a travesty and should not happen. Thank you very much.
Randy Benson.
Randy Benson, B E N F O L I N.
Is it Randy or Randy?
Randy, R E D Y W A. 51 Randy Road, Sturgis, Mass. Okay, my first question is, I know we, people have brought up the question of safety and everything, and they talked about training. My concern is, who's going to pay for that? Particularly, not only training, but equipment that may be Charlton, Southbridge, Sturgis, towns might need to contribute to the emergency at this facility. Who's going to pay for that? I don't think any of these towns have the resources where they would have to buy a possibly a phone truck or whatever proper piece of equipment to fight a fire at this facility. And to put that onus on any of these towns to purchase equipment just for this one facility to go in, I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of the town. The second concern, which has been brought up many times, is that the government's seeking the reason for going to this site versus for Route 20 site. The 169 intersection at Route 20, as most people are probably aware, everybody's familiar with here, is the one place where Route 20 goes down to one lane, between Sturgis and east of Auburn. This is a bottleneck to begin with, just with local traffic, particularly in the summer, the tourist traffic. You now add, you said 12 to 14 trucks a day, but that's actually 24 to 28 vehicle trips, one in, one out, per day. At that intersection, you're just gonna keep triggering the like every time a truck goes through it. So I wasn't here, wasn't familiar with Route 20 site. I'm just saying, you're saying that the Flatlands and other environmental strengths, but you had proposed 12 acres on a 224-acre site. You're saying there isn't 12 acres of room that could be relocated and still keep it on that Route 20 site? The traffic of these trucks, as you have stated, are all going to Route 20, one way or the other, whether it's Route 169 or right out directly onto Route 20. It seems to me that having traffic improvements on Route 20, intersection of the site from Route 20, might be more appropriate than bringing traffic down from Route 169. Also, this is going to be considered a route 169, the 169 site. I would recommend that they consider about what is used, you know, as a jaybreak on the trucks to post that they're not allowed to be used. These are residential areas, both at the entranceway to the site and entranceway to Route 20, that they have, they do post areas for the trucks not to use those jaybreaks. They're gonna be running a 24-hour operation of residents in those areas. I'm going to be willing to be listening to them. So that would just be a recommendation, should be considered at that site. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Holwa.
Joe Holwa, H O L E W A, 94 Blend Road, Charlton, Mass. So I attended the first meeting, and I applied to be an intervenor for this process. I thought it might be useful to have a private citizen to be an intervenor. I got some feedback that maybe I'd be better off as a woman participant, mostly because I think the reason was I wouldn't bring experts to the table. Well, what I'd like you to know is I work for Harvard University. As a contract manager, I've been there for eight years. I work with Harvard University's top attorneys, O G C. I also work closely with the School of Engineering and Applied Sciences. My plan was to ask a few engineers there to be interns on this project. So that was my plan. I was also the former zoning board chairman at Town and Dudley. And I do have a real strong concern that I wanna talk to Mr. Avery about, which is, they're applying for a total exemption of zoning bylaws. So the bylaws that you voted in as a town, and we're smart enough to do, they're saying, doesn't apply to our project. And they're saying, well, maybe it's a, you know, square big and a round hole, that type of thing, okay? But if you think about it, that's exactly why the zoning bylaws were put into place. There's a process you go through. You go to the zoning board, and if you file for a variance, right? And you have a discussion with the board, you invite the neighbors in to find out what their concerns are, their butters. Based on that process, you either vote in a variance or not. You know, the example he gave with the tank, okay? It's above ground, it's for safety. I get it, that's why you go to the zoning board, you explain that, and you get a variance for that. So I'm not, if you're, if you're gonna let this go into the Department of Public Utilities and let them decide for you how this is gonna affect you, good luck. I don't, I don't agree with that at all. I had an open mind in November when these folks came here, okay? That's rapidly been changed. My confidence in these guys has really, has gone downhill for that one very fact of zoning. I don't think it's fair to the town of Charlton, that's unfair to me, or my wife or kid, or family. So it's something you really should make known to your state rep, state senator, your governor. I'll tell you, Governor Baker does listen. When we had that fatal accident on Route 20, my wife was almost in that. We called the governor's office, and he showed up, so. So anyways, that is, you know, it does make a difference. Make those phone calls. The second thing I'm gonna say is 2 million gallons of L N G. Each gallon has 84,000 BTUs of energy. 2 million gallons, get this, is the equivalent energy of not one, not two, but three atomic bombs that leveled Hiroshima, okay? That's what you're stirring up there. So you figure out, okay, and, there's never been, and these engineers will testify to this, I'm sure, there's never been a large-scale test of a release of L N G gas anywhere in the world. There's been accidents, but they've done simulations in a lab, they've done small releases, they've done some tests, but never a large-scale test that did, you know, tons of L N G gas to see what happens. Theoretically, this stuff will eventually dissipate into the air. A cloud will form, and it'll go someplace. But if that cloud goes into an enclosed airspace, and you have approximately 15% of oxygen, you're gonna get explosion like you've never seen before, okay? So you have every right here to be very concerned about this. I'm gonna do my best to make sure that you're informed, and I'm gonna make sure, hold these people accountable, because they need to be held accountable. You don't want this without, really, the due process that it's gonna have to go through, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holwa. Richard McGrath.
My name is Richard McGrath. Richard McGrath, M C G R A T H, I'm on Sunmill Circle in Charlton. And kinda going last, and a lot of people stole my thunder. There is articles on the town warrant that wasn't heard before this, because the meeting ended, which are coming up in two weeks, that changes the zoning to allow a special permit for not only liquid gas, but it even talks about nuclear and other energy sources, so that it can be put into areas such as residential. And the planning board is the sponsor of those articles, which I'm kinda concerned about. One of the things I read prior to this in The Telegram was the phrase "energy corridor." Route 169 was an energy corridor. And it was mentioned by one of the gentlemen from M D C tonight. It's got a subliminal message that this is what's going to already go in. And with the information of the fact that they can go and bypass our zoning by just going to the state and telling us that we don't matter, it tells me that something's already in the works. And I'm very concerned by the fact that although we are voicing our concern tonight, that whatever process has already started, whatever deals have been made through the town, or wherever, that money talks, and we mean nothing. And I'm very concerned that I'm gonna speak up at our continued town meeting in regards to Article 19 and 20, which are specifically towards rezoning and allowing energy facilities to go by on a special permit, where a half dozen people in the town get to decide what's best for everybody else, and we don't have much of a say. And I'm concerned that our voices are not gonna be heard tonight, although you guys guarantee us, the Merrimack Valley people, the gas people up there, guaranteed safety to Lawrence, North Andover, and Andover. And there's still cleaning up there, too. And they said, well, that was just a mistake. Well, people make mistakes. The people are gonna be building this facility.
Ed Kochling.
My name is Ed Kochling, that's K O C H L I N G, I'm at 47 Hanson Road in Charlton, 47 Hanson Road. I live on the other side of town, from, I'm sure most of you live near this project, but I recognize that what affects you affects me. But I also understand this is, this project seems to be good for the state, it seems to be good for the county over here, but can somebody explain to me why it's good for Charlton? Why is this project good for us?
It's not.
Well, I'm asking them. Why is this project good for us in Charlton? Because here's my, here's my thought. See, when the property values in this area go down, that affects me. And you know why? Because we have budget, and it means that my taxes have to go up to pay for that. It also affects our schools, it's just very detrimental. So, I really need to know why this is good for Charlton. You have not met with any of the other boards in town. This is another V G G thing. They did the same thing. They show up, the planning board, they put on their spiel. You guys didn't do that. And again, they give and go, do their homework, and go to any other boards. Have you guys been to the Water Sewer Commission?
The company, the company may answer that question.
As discussed, the project does not consume water, so we didn't vote.
Lot of this.
Okay, so.
The project does not consume water, does not use water. So that's why I didn't apply to the Water Commission.
Okay, well, any industrial project, you're gonna have to have water at the site, right? You're gonna have to have water coming into the site, you know, for the facilities, for the people that work there, correct? So anytime you have a water sewer, or industrial site, you have to go to the Water Sewer Commission. You're also gonna have wastewater? Is wastewater produced by this project?
Yes, we'll have a septic tank.
I see, okay. So what about, have you prepared a financial impact report for the town?
Yeah, the city is one of the assessors for the town. It prepares a financial impact report.
Are you planning on applying to NEPA?
The project is below the NEPA threshold. So we don't have enough environmental disturbance to be cited for NEPA regulation. The previous site was, this site is not.
So I was under the impression that NEPA required you, when you have an initial project, and then you downsize it. It seems like that's one of the reasons for downsizing it, is just to avoid NEPA. I'm pretty sure that that's not legal. So I would ask that you, you look into that. Because again, that's one of the tricks of the trade. If you, you hit the thresholds, what you wanna do is get underneath the thresholds, so that you don't have to comply with those rules and regulations. And that's, that's very, very important, because in Charlton, you know, our natural resources are parallel to our energy. And we wanna make sure that you just don't have to go to the local conservation.
It is important, and we appreciate that you've been open-minded, we also been open-minded. And we also want to be sure that you understand too, that we are looking for the lowest-impact solution, lowest impact on environment, lowest impact on neighborhood. And as discussed, we believe that the project would be a good neighbor and could be helpful. Because, same as you, we believe that environmental issues are important, the climate change is important. And we also believe that we should be taking active and proactive steps towards this. The fact is, most of the people in Charlton do continue to use oil as a heating source. It's not great. The fact that during the oil vortex, power generation of the Commonwealth run on oil, not a great example. We are concerned about CO2 emissions. We are concerned about methane emissions. And the level of differences between sulfur oxide emissions, nitrogen oxide emissions, a by factor of 98, 99% high when you are running on oil. The impact of particles emissions is much higher when you are running on oil. There is no magic bullet, there is no silver lining. We have to look jointly, have to figure out how to look jointly, have to figure out how to establish trust between everybody. and finding the best solution for any energy projects. None of energy is safe if it's not handled safely. I don't want to make clear on the record that LNG is not explosive material. So let's be sure about this. And you can see appropriate treatment of electric, transmission and distribution like a Pacific Gas and Electric, appropriate treatment to gas, appropriate treatment of oil. Everything does require safe, professional and high-technology approach to this. And we do believe that this facility will meet this threshold.
So, again, I guess everybody in the room knows that gas is less polluting than oil or coal. But you asked for our trust, you asked for the neighbors' trust. And the truth of the matter here is that you're here for money. It's about the money. The environmental side and all the other stuff is sort of unfranchised. It's about the money. And for the state, it's about, you know, trying to find energy solutions for the Commonwealth. Obviously, my national grid, this is the National Grid associated project. My electric bill has gone up double. I don't have solar on my roof. So so much for future planning and everything. I'm using less electricity and paying twice as much money. I really think that, you know, we have what, another two weeks for comments? And comments on what? There's nothing here that really comes in. We don't, like I said, no traffic study, no, they haven't been to any other boards. I would suggest that they go to these other boards, go to the select board, go to the planning board, get through that process and then start to think. Because then people here can come and talk intelligently about what their questions really are. Not go on by news article that was written the other day. So with that said, as far as the town of Charlton is concerned, I am getting fed up with all these big companies and everybody wanting to come to town, tell us about how great they are and all the things that they're going to do. And no financial impact report. We didn't get one from DGG. We didn't get one from the select board. Before you can start this, you guys should have been here with a financial impact report. You've had plenty of time to look at different sites. You've been doing this for a year. There should be a financial impact report so we all know as residents what is going to happen here and how it's going to affect us financially as well as health-wise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. John Proudy.
John Proudy, 107 Patridge Hill Road. P-R-O-U-T. P, P-R-O-U-T. So I came here tonight primarily to get some information. And as I was coming in front table, I sit for the lady. We're going to be able to ask questions. And she says, only if you sign in. I said, oh, that's different. So because I wanted to possibly ask some questions, I signed in. I had the hope that I would get some real information. I picked up a piece of paper with a couple of maps on it. And then I listened. And I have to tell you, I've heard just a lot of, awful lot of doublespeak here tonight. I haven't really gotten what I consider real information. You know, it's like, for example, you know, we have a preferred site. And I listened carefully. I heard that that was preferred because it had a better flavor. Flavor? I don't know how flavor works into a site preference. I also heard that there was some synergy with a Jason project. And I heard that the site that they spent probably a long time working up, the one on Route 20, which on the surface seemed like the best site. That one, as I discovered from Mr. Kochling's announcement, it probably had a MIPA requirement, so we dodged that. Instead of going away from here with some real information, some real encouragement that this is something we want to really look for, I'm really disappointed that they've been, well, maybe ill-prepared and maybe obtuse and ill-served, not advantaged. And to me, that's a big red flag. And I'm not looking for the spot because you had your chance. Thank you.
Pamela.
Paquin.
Paquin.
Pamela Paquin, P-A-Q-U-I-N, 16 Ellis Road, Southbridge, Massachusetts. Thank you for coming to our small town. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, excellent. If I get quiet, tell me.
I can't quite.
Not much of a chance at that. All right. Southbridge and Charlton are rural communities. Southbridge is an old mill town where I come from. We're looking to rebuild our economy. So we're very open to new investments and to new companies. That's partially why I brought my company to Southbridge. So it's exciting to see the economy growing and new companies potentially coming in. But not all of them. And you probably are familiar with this area of Southbridge and Charlton because of the super landfill and the issues that we had with that and the promises that were made and the promises that were broken and the poisoning of the water, which will last for hundreds of years beyond all of our deaths. So there's that. And that was, I think, Southbridge got, what, four million a year or something like that in taxes?
Maybe, ours went up.
Yeah, right. So we also want to talk about the wetlands. Because if you look at the map of these two sites, and you are saying that you moved from the preferred site from Route 20 to 169 because of the wetlands abutting the first site on Route 20. But you look at Caddy Brook, it's right there. It's no further away than the wetlands on the first site next to Route 20. So I'd really like to know what the difference is. And Caddy Brook comes into my town and I have a problem with that. The other thing is, if you look at this, why, why is the board of health not being informed that these things are happening? I mean, this is just shocking to me. This is a clear health issue for residents, not only of Charlton, but I would say more so of Southbridge. Because if you look at the map on the satellite, there are thousands of people less than a mile away. People who went through a tornado in 2011 and have just rebuilt their homes. People who have had to endure the super landfill of Casella and the waste that has ruined their drinking water for hundreds of years. I think that we have carried our burden quite far enough for the state of Massachusetts. So I want to read some information about flaring. Because I'm learning about this as of last night at about eight o'clock. But I lived next to it when I was in Scotland, so I've seen them. And I've been doing some research on studies. And this is what, one of the studies where they were looking at the Niger Delta where natural gas flaring has been going on for the past few years. So it's a good place to study the effects on human health. And this is what they say. "The study in the Niger Delta found to influence diseases such as asthma, cough, respiratory difficulty, eye and skin irritation. Also, health implications of long-time exposure to emissions from gas flaring on some human hematological parameters investigated revealed striking deterioration in hematological parameters. Exposure of residents around gas flare sites to emissions from the gas was reported to reduce peak expiratory flow rate." That's how you can breathe. That's how your children can breathe. "Peak expiratory flow rate, respiratory morbidity." That's dying. "Skin disorders and other related health risks." So I want to move up to where they discuss in this report the different toxins that come out of these flares. Okay, here we go. "Globally, gas flaring is recognized as a colossal waste of natural resources, which is about 150 billion cubic meters flared annually. Flared gas is a major contributor to global warming and climate change." So volatile organic chemicals. Polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbon, PAC, particulate matter, PM, black carbon, that pollutes the air, soil and water. Over 250 toxins such as hydrogen sulfide, toluene, tolu, benzene sulfur dioxide, benzoyl, nitrogen dioxides, xylene, et cetera, have been identified as flaring gas. These pollutants, especially PM and the precursor gases emitted, have been reported to have adverse health effects on the environment and human health." Now to the points about Southbridge. Because if you look at the topography of the region where they're proposing putting this flaring site, I mean, I don't know enough about engineering to talk about the tank. But it's a valley. It's down in a valley. There is a 130-foot elevation change directly behind the proposed site on 169. Why do you put a flare in a valley and who is downwind of that? You know who's downwind of that? Thousands of Southbridge residents with kids who have just been exposed to a tornado and a super landfill and have their water polluted for hundreds of years. Thousands of kids, downwind. I don't know if they bothered to do a study of the prevailing winds and the effects of wind on topography. But I haven't heard anything about it today or how you plan to handle it. So my other question is, what I think I heard was that we're not going to benefit from this. This gas, if I'm correct, and please somebody, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, is going to other parts of the state. Southbridge and Charlton aren't going to be fed by this plant. You guys aren't selling us gas locally. These trucks aren't going to come and get us and serve our houses, correct?
Can I answer maybe all the questions?
No, I have one question for you. The question is, are we going to be getting natural gas from this plant in Southbridge and Charlton?
Yes, as discussed in today's presentation, we'll start to supply gas to businesses and facilities in Charlton.
You're going to supply natural gas to businesses in Charlton?
Correct.
And nobody else?
I mean, we don't have pipeline to anybody else. And second, as you gave me the opportunity to speak, references to gas where.
I didn't know. I'm sorry, this is my time. Please sit down. I'm not done. I had one question for you. You've answered it. Please sit. Thank you. So I'd like to know how many of the people from these companies live in Southbridge or Charlton? Any? Is there one? Please.
Yes, you may answer.
Yes, the owner of the business lives in Charlton.
The owner of which business?
Incom.
Incom. And what are they doing?
They're a manufacturer of fiber optic materials.
So Incom lives, the owner of that company, which is going to be running this facility, lives in Charlton. What is Incom's role in this, in this business?
It's a business. It's not us. It's a separate business.
All right, I'm not talking about Incom. I'm talking about your facility, the, the gas facility. Do any of the owners of the companies live in Charlton or Southbridge?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question. How many of the investors in this facility live in Southbridge or Charlton? Stakeholders, stockholders of the companies? Any of them?
Can we answer?
Yeah, please.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
It would be appreciated.
Not in Charlton, Southbridge or Worcester County. We have a broader set of investors throughout the Commonwealth, but no, not in, not in Charlotte or South.
Okay, I have a few other, I think maybe, can I, I have a few other questions for him? Maybe he can answer about that?
Yes.
Um, thank you. So how many of your investors in this company and the companies associated with it live in the United States? And what percentage are United States citizens or companies? And what percentage are foreign entities?
Can we answer?
Yes, you may.
100% US citizens or US institutions.
So no money from this facility will be leaving this country?
Correct.
Good to hear. All right. So. Quick question on the septic tank. Because I want to follow up from one of the very insightful questions about wastewater from a previous speaker. You said that you were going to have a septic tank on your property to handle your wastewater?
Can we answer?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
I mean, the facilities we discussed will have the most three people. Whatever the requirement for these three people on site would be met through existing wastewater pipelines available or through a septic tank on site.
So that's for human waste?
Correct, three places.
And you have no water disposal from your industrial process whatsoever?
Correct. We don't use water in our industrial process.
All right, so it's only human waste?
Correct.
Good to know. All right? I think I've through my list. Let me have one last look. Oh, here, yeah, I wanted to, thank you very much, sir. Just a quick note to the board. In thinking about citing a facility like this, because I recognize that we have energy needs in our state that need to be fulfilled in many different ways as we proceed in the evolution of energy consumption, I think it's probably better to cite a facility like this, as somebody referred to before, in a place where it doesn't have such a direct impact on the local population, that there aren't residences so close to it, that you look at something like the flare and it being in a valley and the impact on air quality for thousands of residents less than a mile, two miles away. Our town center in Southbridge is two miles away. We have thousands of people living there. And so what my hope is, is in looking at a potential alternative to this site would be to look for a place that has a higher elevation so that that flare, when it releases the gases from the processing of the natural gas, that it's not released in a valley where it can be funneled and channeled towards people's homes. So I would encourage you to look for an alternative site where people aren't living, where, as somebody very astutely recommended, you have some buffer around it. Eleven acres is very small. It's a very small buffer zone. We haven't talked about the kill zone if there's an explosion. But part of that is obviously also fumes, toxic fumes, and where that air is going to travel. With the prevailing winds, they stand coming through that valley. Any resident can tell you, they're coming from the west, they're going east. And that takes anything that comes out of that factory and sends it right into downtown Southbridge. So I hope that you'll consider that and encourage this company, who has, I'm sure, hundreds of miles of pipeline in Massachusetts to choose from, to look for somewhere where there aren't 15,000 people two miles away. Thank you.
Maureen Wood.
Maureen Doyle. Maureen, M-A-U-R-E-N-D-OY-L-P, and I live at 771 Lebanon Road in Southbridge. And a lot of my things have been said before, but I'm just going to say it. A concern in Southbridge with the large landfill, Casella, was that geographically the area was in a valley or a hole. And there was a lot of pollution from the trucks entering and exiting, as well as a lot of methane from the dump itself. So what kind of pollution and gases will be admitted into the bowl, into this valley? And how will they react to this bowl-like terrain? There's a high level of asthma in Southbridge and Charlton, I believe, too. And also, when we were talking about MEPA and wetlands, there are two Brooks at the 169 site, K D and Kit Street. So I think MEPA study needs to be done. And if N E C is so sensitive to the wetlands, it should be sensitive to other environmental issues as well, such as the Brooks and the pollution. So if anybody could answer what other pollution beside from methane?
Will be emitted by the facility or created by the facility? Does the company wish to respond?
I mean, just to make sure I understand the question, it's asking about the, what emissions this facility produces in its, in its normal operation?
Yes, that will be trapped essentially in that valley.
Yeah, I mean, the process is to take the gas off the pipeline, to run it through this nitrogen compressor to liquefy it and, and store it in the tank. There is combustion, we, we use a turbine to, to compress the gas, so there is a, some, some emissions related to running that turbine. I think that is the, the, the main source of emissions at the site.
Emissions?
Burning, burning natural gas will release carbon dioxide, trace amounts of nitrous oxide, trace amounts of particulates, but relatively small scope of things. And just to address maybe the, the other question, there is the flare, there, there is no gas flare at this facility, just to be clear on the normal operations, that's, that's not the anticipated way that we run a facility.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Etel Haja. Etel, and my last name is spelled H-A-X-H-I-A-J. I live at 4 Englewood Avenue in Worcester, so I'm not a Charlton resident. I'm not speaking on behalf of mothers out front, I'm an organizer for them during, by trade. I am speaking though, coming back, leaving my two little boys at home with my mom, because I am really concerned on a lot of fronts. What I'm holding in my hand is a presentation by Dr. Brita Lundberg, who is with Greater Boston Physicians for Social Responsibility. We had her in Worcester, actually, just a few weeks ago, holding forum on gas leaks. The brilliant attorney who spoke before spoke about the dangers of methane, and I don't know if anybody in this room has heard it, I don't know if you gentlemen have heard it, but we essentially have about 12 years to make sure that our children and our grandchildren and the generations that will come behind us have a habitable planet. It deeply concerns me to hear you speak about swooning us with the rhetoric or the narrative that gas is safe. It's not. From production to transmission to distribution, including L N G plants, there is absolutely nothing safe about gas. In fact, let me read you from this brilliant physician who came to Worcester a few weeks ago. This is scientific data, by the way. Natural gas is associated with hazardous, hazardous air pollutants. Volatile organic compounds like benzene, toluene, ethyl benzene, and xylene, what do they do? I'll tell you, they affect the nervous system, they cause cancer, can cause birth defects. There are no safe levels. According to the EPA report dated February 2017, it's confirmed that drilling, which is basically fracking, which is basically what you're bringing into Massachusetts, is impacting drinking water. So a lot of Americans live around water sources that's located within a mile of fracking well. Do you know what else fracked gas does to mothers and expectant mothers before they give birth? They affect their children in their womb. I'm sure you have wives, daughters, sisters, aunts, women, mothers that you care about. That's what you're doing, that's what you bring into our community. At a time when we are facing a climate emergency, nobody on this panel, no one on this panel should be advocating for things like this to be expanded into our communities. I don't live in Charlton and I feel really bad for what that brilliant woman in the back talked about, the fact that we have absolutely no guarantee that your facility is going to be a safety point for the children that are going to be contending in the bus, the buses, that are going to be running in the same highway, that your trucks, which you're not telling us the size of them either, are going to be running against or next to. Your trucks are going to be traveling next to bus, school buses, residents, people, and you are sitting here telling us that this is okay, that this is, that there's no, that there's, they're foolproof. There aren't. Canada, Texas, Tennessee, there's plenty of sites. In, in fact, Providence, our neighbor Providence, they fought really, really, really hard to not bring an LNG facility, because the people there, environmental justice communities, recognize that natural gas is not natural and there's nothing, absolutely nothing healthy about natural gas. It is dirty gas. It needs to stay on the ground. And I really, really hope, I know you are all appointed by Governor Baker, not a friend of, of the, of the climate justice community, just follow the money and see how many fossil fuel industry are, are currently contributing to this campaign. The Waymoth compressor, I don't know if y'all have been following the Waymoth compressor fight, but this, the, the environmental impact or the health impact study that they just committed, it was, it was fraudulent. They found the carcinogens that were going to be emitted within the, the radius mile of the, of the Waymoth compressor. Our mothers, I know I'm not speaking on behalf of mothers out front today, but I do have to share this story because it is very important for people to hear, that there's power in organizing. I don't care how much power you think you have, there is power in organizing. The Cayuga Plant in New York currently was shut down, similar facilities to yours. 14 to 48 trucks running through that highway every single day. Mothers and residents got together and were able to revert the permit. And now they're considering doing a renewable energy plant. That's what we should, should be moving. Your stakeholders and your investors shouldn't be investing in fossil fuel, that is to stay on the ground. And I'm upset, I'm upset because I have two small children at home that are going to be impacted by expanded fossil fuel infrastructure. That's what that is, and we don't need that in our communities. We don't need that in Charlton, Southbridge, we don't need that in Worcester County, we don't need that in Massachusetts, period. There needs to be a moratorium on all fossil fuel pipelines, period. Thank you.
I have one more name on the speaker's sign up sheet, and that is Melissa Whiting.
My name is Melissa Whiting, it's M-E-L-I-S-S-A, Whiting is W-I-D-I-N-G. I live at 89 H-Foot Road, Charlton, Mass. H-Foot Road, Charlton, Mass. As many of you have spoken about tonight, my husband and I are living the nightmare of Casella. This is our fourth year of contaminated water. We have been very outspoken, we've spoken with state reps, we've spoken with the EPA, we've spoken with the D C T, we've been very involved with a number of organizations. We attend every board of health and they'll see us all over town, everybody knows who we are. We are now the homeowners, we've lived our entire lives in Charlton, we've been homeowners for 21 years, as I said, dealing with the crap for four years with Casella, using bottled water. My husband also owns a company in town. My big concern, one of my big concerns for us, is that it's a welding company. And so he's one of two welding companies, whether you know that or not, in the area. So with this gas being out there, I want to know how you can guarantee that if some big cloud comes along, some leak happens, some sort of, something happens, that we're not going to vote proof, because he's running a welding business, and half mile down the road on Commercial Drive is another welding business. Our business is directly behind Incom and Mr. DeRando, who's here in the audience this evening, we're directly behind, so if you walk a straight path through trees, you get to our house. That is a huge concern, that is a very huge concern. So I'd like some, some information about how you can guarantee that we don't need to be concerned for ourselves, for our business, for our family, for our workers, that's a huge concern.
Safety is priority number one for us, because it's only one way to stay in business, and everybody in LNG community who subscribe to the Massachusetts code, and LNG has been safe in Massachusetts for more than half a century. Overall, when we talk about LNG, and I do want to respond to a few questions that have been raised, that this one of the most captive energy storage. So when we look for concrete right now in renewable economy, in the future economy, we do look for efficient storage solution. Advantage of LNG is the storage, and that's why present, as we discussed in Boston, Cave Cut, Providence, Springfield, for any major city. In the cities that is much higher density, what we are looking on this map. Why is it important? Because you are trying to position your storage close to consumption point, you're trying to position storage, and storage in Boston is 30 times of this site's storage. So we are talking at a much bigger facilities, much higher density population, and this solution is popular because it doesn't use any chemicals like electric battery. This facility does not need to go into landfill at any point like electric battery when you need to dispose. And these types of facilities, they can run through all vortex. There is not yet an electric battery that can run for a few days, or two weeks, or three days. LNG does. Same as you, everybody is looking for future solutions. Same as you, we continue technological improvements. There are no secrets in this, there was another question came up, what does it mean a hybrid solution? Hybrid solution means in this case that we are considering at this point to use a hybrid ride. Usually in Massachusetts, most of facilities are gas driven, so you have a gas turbine, as Mark explained. And just to put this turbine in perspective, we are talking about an 8 megawatt turbine, we're letting station just to put it in scale, it's 360 megawatt turbine. So it's a relatively small gas turbine. To reduce this turbine even more, we will be using a hybrid solution, so it will be this gas turbine plus electric motor. So this is same hybrid solution as being used in Toyota Prius, when you drive Toyota Prius. When you need to accelerate, you use electric battery, when you need to slow down, you use electric battery, and engine runs consistently, and that's why you can choose a smaller frame for the gas turbine. So there are no secrets about this stuff, and that is why in every major city in the United States, with much higher density, you have facilities like LNG facilities, and they serve Massachusetts really well, they do have a stellar safety record. And frankly, if you compare safety record of LNG relative to any other energy source, it beats any other energy source hands down. But it is important issue, facility will have state of the art safety equipment, and, and as discussed, will continue to work with every stakeholder, and we will acknowledge, we try to reach to everybody in town. Some people took our call, as some people we still need to meet. We love that the dialogue will continue, we definitely respond, and we'll participate in our court June 11 meeting. So we'll continue the dialogue, and we'll continue the dialogue with everybody from the audience, because the only one way to build the right facility is to take everybody's opinion into account.
Mr. Kachowski also had asked this evening about odor, and that was never addressed, he was one of the first people to ask.
Yeah, there is no odor from these facilities, we discussed, it is a closed loop facility. So nothing, there are no smell. If you go to Springfield near the LNG time, you go to Boston, you will not be able to sense any odor.
One of the things that we heard from Casella quite a bit was that there are good neighbors, and everyone comes in and wants to be a good neighbor, but good neighbors don't take care of their neighbors like this. So I want to make that point, that you're really coming into a neighborhood where you're sandwiching in people that are already dealing with four years of nonsense that was nothing they're doing, and now you are literally putting us in the middle of two horrible situations. Horrible, absolutely horrible. We don't want it, we didn't want Casella, we, we have no interest in this, this is not benefiting us. And if I might say that, humbly suggesting, that pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 3, this project is not reasonably necessary for the convenience or welfare of the public. It's not convenient, it's not necessary, it's not beneficial, and certainly you're not doing anything for Charlton by bringing it here, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whiting. As I mentioned, I don't have any more people signed up to speak, but I'd like to ask you all if there's anyone who would like to speak but, but didn't actually sign comments.
Sorry, once again, Dvorowski, 69 Hagerty Road. Through the hearing officer, this is for Mr. Avery and team. One of the concerns I think many of us have had over the past couple of years is the number of solar farms that have moved in, and that policy aside, one of the assumptions was that we were going to receive X amount of tax revenue. Because of legislative slash tax loopholes, we are potentially going to see a fraction of that, and we will be left on, on the hook. So my question, through the hearing officer, to Mr. Avery, I just want, like to hear someone go on record that the organization of the company has every intention of paying every single dollar, if approved, of tax money. There will be no pursuit of tax legislative loopholes, that there is no nonprofit status that they're not aware of, that for intents and purposes, that again, being a good neighbor, that again, if approved, that we will see every single tax dollar that we are supposed to get.
Does the company wish to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
I think I'll give you a simple answer. Yes, there are these same sort of exemptions available that the solar industry outside represents some of them. This, the company's been working good faith on those issues, and it is one of the benefits, I guess you'd say. There's another benefit that I don't think we talked a little bit about, or didn't talk much about, but some of the storms that you have, having, the concept of resilience, when you have these bad storms and long outages, perhaps there may be some synergies that could benefit the, the Charlton community. They could restore civilization and, and utilities and power, things much more quickly to people in the media and citizens here. So there, hopefully, will be some good things, and they're working in good faith on the taxes, as you discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Avery, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Whiting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who might like to ask a question of the company or provide some comments?
Pamela. Wait, there. I just have one more question. Pamela, 16 LS Road, Southbridge. This is just in response to one of the women who live near this site who just spoke, talking about Boston and liquid natural gas facilities being safe and comparing it to Boston. Well, this is what they say about the Boston facility in terms of how it's protected to keep it safe. With September 11, 2001 in mind, the Coast Guard coordinates an armada of protection for each trip in and out of a liquid natural gas facility in Boston. A helicopter, police divers, marine patrol, environmental police, firefighting tugs, city police boats, and Coast Guard vessels. Are we going to get all of that for our giant tank of 2 million gallons of liquid natural gas? What do you guys think?
This is one of the rare cases when the public here can find an answer for liquid. Actually, this facility helped to displace the coal that's related to the Everett facility, which is an import LNG facility. So when the vessel comes from Yemen, when the vessels come from overseas, it is exported by national guard. So this facility, Everett facility, is an imported facility. And on reliability of this facility and security issues, they drive actually need for homemade, Massachusetts-made LNG. And that is one of the reasons why this facility is in public, needed in public interest. And I also want to address probably the previous question, too. This facility does not expand use of fossil fuels. So this is not enlarging of the pipelines. This is not creating new customers. So this facility actually displaces oil. So LNG is a little more expensive than natural gas. So it doesn't compete, it doesn't promote for natural gas. We don't have more throughput of natural gas for the pipeline. What we do, you have two options during really cold winter in this environment. You can switch to oil or you can switch to liquid natural gas. And the choice is relatively straightforward from economics point of view because LNG is two or three times cheaper than oil. So it's attractive and environmentally safe. It is a solution that will continue to work and will continue to improve. Same, we will continue to look for better technologies, how to advance it. But in today's environment, there is nothing else which during polar vortex can run for two months than LNG. So in this case, we are displacing dirtier fossil fuel with cleaner fuels. So this is a concept of this facility, and it does not expand consumption of fossil fuels.
Thank you. I'll check one more time. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight?
Richard McGrath, I say MCG, RATH, who saw him on the circuit when I spoke before. You guys talked very well about how natural gas is a lot better than oil, a lot better than coal, and all the rest. That doesn't affect us in any way. The town of Charlton gets no benefit from this. We're not going to get natural gas lines and put it to our homes. And if we did, we're not going to get it at a reduced rate. You're talking about getting your product closer to the consumer. We're not your consumers. The only thing that we incur in this is a liability for safety and a liability of property values. This doesn't help Charlton at all, in any way, shape, or form, other than what you might give to the town at a tax base, which we could give from other registry and other businesses. But this doesn't help us, doesn't help the end of consumer here and having a cleaner burning furnace in our homes because we don't have gas lines in our homes.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. All right. Before we go off the record, I will take this opportunity to encourage those who are interested in further involvement in this case to investigate the possibility of intervening or participating as a limited participant. Remember, however, that petitions to do so must be received by the citing board no later than 5 o'clock PM on Wednesday, June 12, 2019. And I want to make one point about this deadline as clearly as I can, which is, I believe it was Ms. Dowden asked if she could have an extension of time to allow her to attend the June 13 town meeting. And I asked her to submit her request to me in writing, including email. I don't want anyone here thinking that that was a general waiver of the June 12 deadline. The June 12 deadline is the June 12 deadline. Now, if anyone else here thinks that they need an additional day or some amount of additional time to get your petition in, you need to do the same thing that she's going to do, which is to send me an email requesting X number of additional days and providing a good reason why you should be given additional days. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. It was not a waiver of the June 12 deadline. It applies to everyone. It may even apply to her. I haven't granted her a request for additional time yet.
Could you spell, speak out loud your email so that it could be broadcast?
Oh, you want my email address?
Yes.
Sure. It's K-A-T-H-R-Y-N dot S-E-D-O-R at mass.gov.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so again, that June 12 deadline is the deadline for petitions to intervene or to participate. Written comments, if they can be filed by June 12, that's very helpful. But as I said at the beginning of the hearing tonight, written comments will be received by the citing board at any time. We will review them. They will go into the official docket for the case. And as a further reminder, copies of the citing board's rules for intervening and participating, if there are any copies left, are available at that table outside the door. Also, we staff will be here for a few minutes after we close the hearing now. And we would be happy to talk with you briefly or answer any questions you might have right now about how to intervene or become a limited participant. So thank you all very much for coming tonight and for your comments and your questions. And on behalf of staff, I wish you a good evening. Thank you.